Turn my mic on. There we go. Afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Town of Bowling Green's Town Council Meeting, Thursday, November 3rd, 2022. If I can get everybody to stand, please follow me for Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. All right. First up on the agenda, item number one. We have a rezoning from B1 to R2. We have RZS 2022-002. 133 Chase Street, Milton D. and Shirley J. Harrison, owner and applicant, requesting a rezoning from B1 business, no specific destiny, to R1 residential with a gross density of no more than 3.63 dwelling units per acre on tax map 43A2-15-1, consisting of .909 acres. This property is located on the north side of Chase Street, approximately 50 feet from the intersection of Chase Street and Meadow Lane in Bowling Green, Virginia. Bowling Green Voting District proposal use residential 2021 comprehensive plan designate this as a commercial area. So I'd like to open the public hearing at this time. Anybody who would like to come up and speak on behalf of it, please come up and state your name and your address, and I'll give you three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, before we have the first person come up, may I add two things to that?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. I should have asked you that. I got ahead of myself.
It's okay. You did a good job. The first is that there is an existing structure on the property, and I do have a proffer that states that the property will not be divided any further than as it exists on today's date. And also that there won't be any more residential structures placed on the property. They could still, of course, put a garage, something like that. We're talking about residential dwelling units. And so that's in the proffer as well. And that the Planning Commission did recommend unanimously to the Town Council to approve the project.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Anybody like to say anything? Anybody like to come up and address council?
If you could hit that button at the base of the microphone. Thanks.
I just wanted to, if you have any questions for us. I think the town manager did an outstanding job of indicating what we wanted to do. So we don't have any comments unless you all have questions for us. Sheila is a longtime resident of Bowling Green, and you all might know her father Roland Johnson and Helen, but it's just a prop that we wanted to do. We got it from them.
All right. Thank you. All right. Is there anybody who'd like to say anything or not before we move on? All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else before I close it out? Seeing none, hearing none, second call. I'd like to close public hearing for RZS 2022-002. Counsel, if you want to go ahead and make a motion on this, we can do so at this time.
Sure thing, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the application as submitted.
I'll second that.
All right. Got a first by Mr. Voight, and I got a second by Mrs. Coyle. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye. Opposed nay? Hearing none, motion carries 100%. Oh, also, I forgot to say that Mrs. Gaines is not here. She's not feeling too good tonight. All righty. Y'all have it. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, item number two. There's a public hearing for Comprehensive Plan Amendment for Chapter 9 land use. Valerie, you want to read that one?
Okay. Comprehensive Plan Amendment for Chapter 9 Land Use. Action item, background summary, Comprehensive Plan Amendment. To amend Chapter 9 land use to I change area on the south side of East Broadus Avenue between North Main Street and Travis, currently designated as commercial to low-density residential. Two, change area on the south side of East Broadus between North Main and Travis, currently designated as commercial to low-density. And three, add a definition of mixed use.
May I add something to those comments?
Yes, ma'am. Staff, go ahead.
Okay. So the first one where the request is to change area on the south side of East Broadus between North Main Street and Travis Street is based on the rezoning of the property on East Broadus, where we would call it here in the town, the old State Farm Building. And also Habitat for Humanity was to purchase the surrounding lots. And so there were four total. One was, three of them for Habitat to build upon, and then one of them to have as a residential rather than a commercial structure. And so it is to take those lots, that area right there that was, is currently in the comprehensive plan as commercial, and make that consistent with what was approved by Town Council, and make that residential on the future land use map. The second one is the area on... I'm sorry. The description was improperly written, but it is the area on Chase Street that is currently in the comprehensive plan map as as commercial. And it's taking the area and making it from Main Street. Originally, it was taking it from Main Street to Meadow Lane and making that, or even all the way to A.P. Hill Boulevard, and making that residential in the future land use. After discussion with the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission recommended for that one to just amend the one parcel of which you just heard the rezoning for. The one parcel so that it was consistent in the comprehensive plan. Make that residential in the comprehensive plan, long-range map. And the rest would remain as is, which is commercial on Chase Street. So this is all in the comprehensive plan. Okay? So it's just changing that one parcel. And then the third part of this is to add a definition of mixed use. When, two years ago, the comprehensive plan was last updated, mixed use was added as a use on A.P. Hill Boulevard, but there was no definition. So we struggled to try to determine what best fit in as the appropriate use, what that would look like. Since then, the Planning Commission has gone back and reviewed comprehensive plans from around the region. And what is proposed tonight is an amendment that closely mirrors what you see in Spatylvania's plan, some of Caroline County's plan. Stafford was also looked at. So mixed use is typically a type of of classification that allows a developer a little more flexibility. And it potentially could be higher density, but it is higher quality. And it is new urbanism in nature. And so the Planning Commission spent hours looking at this proposal and going over every word of it. And so this is what they have proposed for tonight. So all three of these amendments then would allow staff to to use the comprehensive plan to guide development in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
All right. Go ahead.
You said that the description was wrong. Was it correctly advertised?
I was wondering that. And I can... I don't have it before me, so... Let's see. Do we have a computer over there? I can look it up in my files.
Okay.
All right. We'll come back. I haven't opened a public hearing, so... Or did I? Did I open it? Darn it. All right. Do I hear any... Anybody like to come up and make a statement to counsel on this matter? Please come on up, state your name and address, please. Give you three minutes.
Evening. My name is Dan Webb. My address is 107 Virginia Avenue. Are you able to go into any more detail as to what the third item definition is? It's always helpful for the public and for people watching on TV to understand what it is you're approving. Is there any way to go through that?
Would you like to look at my packet or... Mr. Webb? Do you want to look at my?
Sure.
Okay.
It's going to be the mixed use.
Allison, is that something that you're able to go over what the changes are or what the definition is, kind of briefly describe?
I can. Is that what... Do you want to continue with the public hearing before?
I want to... Well, if it hasn't been advertised correctly, that's okay.
This has.
It was advertised.
The mixed use has.
It has. Okay.
The other two, you can continue until, you can continue the decision until next month, and I can double-check that. But the mixed use has been advertised properly.
Okay. All right. Okay. We'll do that then. Anybody else like to speak? Seeing none, hearing none. We'll close public hearing. And Allison, if you want to give a brief description?
Sure. Okay. So mixed use, the definition of mixed use, this is... The definition of mixed use, it is two pages in length. And it starts by saying mixed-use areas provide for a variety of land uses, housing types and prices, lot sizes and density, and architectural variety in a compact, walkable community. Mixed land use will encompass a variety of uses from both of the following categories. Commercial uses, retail and office. Two, residential uses, traditional neighborhood, higher-density residential, non-traditional residential, accessory apartments, as well as residential units over commercial use. So there it's describing the two types of mixed uses that would be appropriate. Additionally, mixed land use projects will include other uses, educational facilities, cottage and artisanal industries, live-work projects, recreation facilities, and compatible public and civic facilities. The next thing that it does is talk about pedestrian access required as an alternative to automobile reliance. So this is something typical that you see, is that these are walkable communities with a variety of land uses. Tracks of land should be developed to provide continuity among the various land uses and to create a compatible and walkable living environment and workplace. Transitional uses and/or project design considerations are required to protect the variety of uses in the development. Road, street, and pedestrian quarters must be established in an interconnected street network, preferably grid pattern. So it doesn't force a grid pattern, but it certainly speaks to potentially having a grid pattern. And then, and connect, so then the development will connect to nearby developments and to the core of the town. Mixed-use developments will include both on- and off-street parking, sidewalks, bike lanes, benches, pedestrian-scale lighting, tree-lined streets that soften the hardscape and provide shades of pedestrian, fountains, or other civic embellishments that assist in fostering a sense of community and uniqueness of place. Primary focus for mixed use on the Route 301 corridor will be for commercial developments such as retail, office, service, lodging, food establishments, entertainment, cottage, or artisanal industries as the main use. Residential development within these areas is intended as a secondary or subordinate use in total land area and square footage. In square footage devoted within the land use area. The land use designation encourages mixes of residential typologies of housing, diversification. Residential development is intended to help diversify the land use mix. densities for residential are intended to be blank units an acre, so it's up to what's being proposed, contingent on the availability of public utilities. And then there's a set of policies. There's 16 policies in all that are being proposed by the Planning Commission. One is that mixed-use developments are required to meet high-quality standards related to site layout, building configuration, architectural features, materials, massing, shape and height, landscaping, signage, all of the details that you would see in a mixed-use or planned unit development or new urbanism. It's all called, all of those things. Two, each mixed-use project must have an overall architectural theme, which conforms to the unique historical character of the town. Three, incorporate public open spaces in mixed-use developments. Incorporate the design of active open spaces, for example, plazas, parks, and amenities, walking and jogging trails, recreational facilities, et cetera. Four, appropriate transitions in size, scale, height, massing of building, project density, and peripheral density, considering nearby development and/or setbacks and buffering. So that means that something that is three stories or four stories wouldn't be appropriate in, probably in a town that, like Bowling Green. You look at the scale of the core of the town and the community, and typically it's one and two stories. It doesn't mean that it can't be. It just means that you need to really make sure that what you're proposing, it appropriately transitions to it. So it's possible to transition on Route 301 to something that's three stories, but certainly making it look like a city is not something that would probably be appropriate for the town. Five, encourage the preservation and/or incorporation of unique or sensitive environmental features to the overall design. Six, strongly encourage vertical mixed uses in urban mixed use and traditional neighborhood development areas. So that vertical mixed uses is a term for if you have shops on the bottom, and then you have residential on the second, and if you have third story, then the third story. Seven, vehicular and bicycle pedestrian connections must be made to adjoining developments, including at existing inner parcel access points. Again, that was mentioned earlier, but connecting the development, don't have leapfrog development where you're crossing over, unless you have some type of connectivity that connects it right to the core of the town. Seven, let's see. Let's see. Vehicular and bike pedestrian connections. Eight, require the careful planning and management of safe traffic circulation and access. So each mixed-use development operates as a coordinated circulation system. A strong interconnected street network is essential to the function of mixed use. So we're looking at how cars flow internally, as well as how they are accessing the property. Nine, mixed-use development should be designed so that the multiple-vehicle trips can be combined into one stop by providing several destinations within easy-walking distance. So that's something that you typically see. That's talking about the mixture of uses. That's talking about having amenities so that you're not using so many pedestrian trips for your needs, which is very typical in mixed-use developments. Ten, pedestrian orientation with the emphasis of mixed-use developments when designating buildings and public spaces discourage the accommodation of the automobile. So again, that has to do with a walkable community, which is very important to this concept. Eleven, so we're almost done. Parking must be located to the rear and sides of buildings, preferably at the fringe of development or within structured parking with the building facades clearly visible from the street whenever possible. So this is the concept where you push the buildings closer to the roadways. The parking then is behind them to the sides so that you don't see a sea of parking. What you see are, is a, there's something that is called the, there's a relationship between the building facade and the street, and it provides a sense of place and a nicer quality, better-looking development. And then 12, each project should support a diverse housing mix with a range of housing sizes and types that meet the needs of citizens throughout all stages of life and income levels. So many times you see the mixture of residential in these developments, where you see some townhouses and some duplexes and some, you see multifamily as well as single-family residential. Thirteen, promote the construction of market-rate affordable housing units rather than units that are subsidized for the initial sale to ensure the housing remains affordable over time. Depending on the mixed-use tier, examples may include and are not limited to condominiums, townhouses, and small, single-family houses, to larger homes and active adult and assisted-care facilities. Integrate a range of complementary residential housing designs and price points. So I think that's pretty self-explanatory. Residential, fourteen, residential must not front on roads with a V-dot functional classification of major collector or higher. Or major collector or higher. So that is the frontage. So what you do is you have an access point, and then you integrate it into the development is, again, that internal network. And so you have uses that are integrated into it, not just fronting on a major collector, but that are, as you drive into this type of development, the uses continue, the mixture of uses continue. And then 15, residential development on, and you don't have a lot of curb cuts is the whole idea there. Fifteen, residential development on the Route 301 corridor should be a secondary subordinate use in total land area and square footage devoted compared to the balance of the full extent of the land use area within which the project is a part. So again, the focus is on the commercial. And then the residential is something that can be a component of it, but it is not the emphasis of it. So it's up to the developer to propose something like that. I've had some recent layouts that have been proposed for Route 301 that are more in keeping with this type of, with this definition of mixed use, where you have the variety of uses. You have even buildings that have a mixture of uses in them. But the predominant feature from the roadway would be the commercial. And then as you go into the project, you'd see more residential, that residential component. Sixteen, mixed-use developments may be appropriate pursuant to an approved master plan on infill or redevelopment sites to intensify land use. or redevelopment sites to intensify land use in areas where public facilities are currently available. So again, that speaks to, obviously, we need to make sure for a high density project as this might be, that we do have the proper amount of utilities, water and sewer available. So that is the proposal.
Mr. Mayor, did you close the public hearing?
Yeah, I did close it, but if council would like, I know Dan would like to speak on this. Is that okay?
Okay. Yes. Thank you. You know, I I like a lot of the components of that definition. You know, the only thing that I would say it that really looks like that's a proposal that a county would adopt when we have large land masses, let's say we have a few hundred acres that wants to develop and we're trying to create a bowling green. I would say that the town, you know, already exists and we only have ancillary parcels that that are around the town and we want to encourage, in my opinion, more commercial and growth downtown and the way that we need to do that is with, you know, neotraditional, I'm happy with the neotraditional residential developments on the on the outside, but there are only a couple of parcels that we have that could be developed and the majority of the mixed use areas, you know, are not very deep and so trying to do predominantly a commercial in all of those, I don't think is going to be a winning solution. All of that area out on 301 has been zone commercial for years and it has not developed and there's a reason because there's not a demand. So I would just encourage that we, you know, certainly I think a a commercial component is appropriate, but we should try to develop a a little more on the the residential end out there to try to encourage more development and redevelopment in our downtown area. And then the only other comment, you know, we're talking about heights, you know, for I thought I heard that we were only encouraging one level growth, didn't want stuff to be real high. If we do that, how do we do the residential, you know, the commercial and residential above that? Some of those things didn't sound like they they job, but those are just my thoughts and I appreciate you listening.
Thank you. All right, counsel.
Any more questions before we get into discussion?
How would you all like to proceed on this? I know just being handed it myself, I have a lot of questions that I would like to look at and think about. One of the things is is that it does look like it's leaning more towards commercialized instead of residential. Residential brings more income in, commercialized, we haven't had any commercial out there. We've only had interest in residential. Residential brings commercial, so I don't see the equal in it. I see the more leaning to one side.
Okay, in order to, I guess seeing the questions, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve this recommendation as presented in order to get us to discussion.
I'll second that.
First by Mr. Voight, and a second by Ms. Corle. All in favor, I'm sorry, time for motion, discussion, please. It was on, you went to my head.
I should speak to the height thing real quick just while it is on my mind, I don't want to ignore that. No, I don't think we're encouraging single story development, it's just to have the ease of of transition from from rooftop to rooftop. So, you know, the the general idea of of transitional height is is to have, if you have one set of of buildings, it's all single level, you don't immediately go to three, four, five stories. You do some two stories, then you can do some third stories and, you know, just even it out. That that's that's the intent there. And I guess while I have my mic on, I'll go ahead and and do one more, one more part. Yeah, that area out there, which is what this mostly applies to because this is the area marked on on the map for mixed use, it's that hundred and forty, hundred and fifty acres. And yeah, it's it's been earmarked as commercial for all this time and and yeah, nothing's been out there. If you go back to Valerie, how long has it been now, four years since we started working on that future land use map?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, we had the meetings after the meetings. At the time, you know, that was brought up, that it hadn't been developed at that point. But it always was a remainder that when they put those utilities out there, it was to form a business district that was, you know, that the council at the time that put that out there wanted business, that's why it was put out there, it was an investment for But it didn't happen, you know, but even up to when we were even still work on it, they were still trying to get that hotel and all that. So when it came to all the discussions that we had, the idea of mixed use came up, blend them both, you know, let a little bit of the one in. When the planning commission at that time put all that through, we see we're here now with a mixed use definition because that part got left out. There was no particular definition. This one, you know, as as Allison was saying, it does align fairly well with some of the surrounding county styles. It's actually a little shorter than a lot of them, not all of them. This one is two pages, one of them I think was a page and a half, forget which county. A lot of them were, you know, three to five. You know, you might think sixteen bullet points is a lot, but this it's needed to kind of encompass everything. When the planning commission originally assigned mixed use out there, this 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 was more or less the intent, there was no definition, we we didn't have the the same, yeah, how do I say, maybe staff to push us in the direction to get a a full definition. We also didn't really have all the time in the world, you know, the the planning commission now, you know, I've been sitting with them, you know, really spent several months working on this. So they've been having a a good good groundwork to to lay everything down. Obviously, you know, I don't expect you to just take my word that this is what the old planning commission meant, but it is what I'm going to say. At that time, when that land got marked mixed use, you know, what what we saw was was some action that had a kind of a different interpretation of mixed use. You know, that was, oh, let's, you know, a a it can be zone this or zone that where where the intention and, you know, what I see in most other localities, the interpretation of mixed use is to apply to that entire set of land rather than having individual properties that are islands to themselves. But that's enough history lesson stuff from me. I I do like what's in here and, you know, both Valerie and I were at all of those planning commission meetings as obviously was the town manager, so, you know, any other questions, discussion, I think we can probably answer a lot of what you might have.
May I add something before we continue the discussion? If it's possible, Mr. Voight, and you're willing to amend your motion to to only include the definition of mixed use for this chapter, then the other two issues can be dealt with at a late.
I thought I worded it kind of like that, but yes, I I amend my motion to only reflect the mixed use update.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Valerie, you second that?
Yes, I do.
All right.
I would just like to say, I think the planning commission did a really great job at this. I mean, I look at always the intent of people, whether they're, I mean, where what direction they're coming, where they're coming from, and I feel like the planning commission, it it kind of gives us the vision for where we need to be in the future for what we're doing and and I feel also that to have commercial and residential, excuse me, is 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 kind of a good mix and I'm glad there's more clarification for that because I feel like there's nothing worse than when you see a town that's has some growth to it and people are doing their own thing and we all need to work together to make this town, I think, look beautiful and there I I don't think anything and it's unreasonable. I think it gives flexibility and I thank you guys for it, I think it really is good. I mean, I I think you came from a good place and we do need these things now because growth is going to happen and we need to be on board with what kind of growth do we want to, what do we want it to look like? And you guys are painting that picture and that is very important. Thank you.
How many, how many different owners are out there on that corridor, on that side, do we know? How many different parcels are out there? How many is small, how many is big? I mean, because what's Dan, like Dan is saying, there's only so much out there that can correspond that to this. So how flexibility, what type of flexibility do we have on this? So does the development have to have commercial when they develop housing is the how, you know, everything is emphasized, like you say, on commercial first and then we deal with the housing later? You know, we've got partials that might not be able to do that. So, you know, what's what's the deal with that, do we know?
I tend to think the developer would know what to do to create that mixed use, whether it is commercial and then residential, that's whoever the developer is would know how to do that. Just to your comment, it's been a continuing issue for planning commission and for others, myself, that residential only is not a revenue maker. Forty seven thousand dollars a year in taxes is not even a full time employee. It doesn't create a full time police officer. The services for it would not be conducive to what we need, so I do not believe residential only would be beneficial to provide any revenue for the town. But again, that's just my opinion. But again, the developer knows how to create what needs to be done, given the restrictions and the context of what the mixed use set.
Well, maybe I worded it wrong, I was trying to say property owners because they are small properties out there as well. Okay. But how do you, you know, any more discussion? All right. We'll do a round call on this.
One thing.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
You know, if we went with all businesses out there, what does what's that going to do to our downtown businesses now? I mean, it could it take away from what we're trying to do in downtown already and what we have? I mean, there could be some businesses out there, it would be direct competition with me or Deborah. We don't know that, so, I mean, we want the downtown to strive, that's what we've been working on this whole time, so we don't want to take nothing away from downtown by putting stuff out there. Yes, there is other business that could go there, but, you know, do we want to be kind of selective in what we put there so it doesn't interrupt with people in town already?
How long's G and G been down the road? They compete with you for quite a few things, so.
They they do compete, but then they don't either.
Yep.
I think the mixed use would kind of hit to that point a little bit, you know, because conversely, if you only had residential out there, what would that do to the core of town? You know, we already have our issue with the food line and whatnot, so by having some people and some businesses, I think the demographic of that might work out a little bit better than all of one or the other.
Well, looking at the size of these lots, if you put so much commercial out there, you got to have so many places a park, so you're not going to have, by the time you take parking lot and then you're going to have to have some type of a water retention pond, it's all going to have to be put out there for resi for blacktop for parking lot. So where is there going to be room for any residential other than they build on top of the businesses that there, is that what we're after?
Somewhat, this is not talking about putting like a a central park out there, no. This is, Allison, you can speak to some of the communities as an example.
So something that might.
I may be able to give an example, one maybe, and I don't know if commercial's going in there, but it looks like at seventeen, at the Spotsy Caroline Line where they're developing residential, they're coming back and putting on the road frontage their commercial, maybe. They left a spot there that would separate, so you go down Tidewater Trail on the left hand side going towards Port Royal, it looks like they're starting to put commercial there to buffer with the residents behind it. Maybe one example, another one, I guess you could say maybe, I don't know if Lady Smith Village has commercial in it or not, but.
Yeah, Lady Smith Village is developing its commercial along Route One, so that might be an example. Another example is the courthouse is the Spotsylvania Courthouse area.
Well, what I'm getting at is the depth of the land off of 301, you're not going in that deep. You take a you take a look at the parcel where Stuckey's used to be and you got now you've got the storage facility back there from 301 frontage to that storage facility line, there's no room, so you put you put one thing in there as far as a business, it's going to take all the parking lot. And then where are they going to put the retention pond? Because if you ever been behind a store, the A and M Home Center, look at that retention pond that they had to put in back there just for the few spaces that's we have there. That's all, I mean, that's what I'm getting at, I mean, how much are you going to be able to do out there with some of these really shallow lots?
That's very true. I mean, it this does say that it's predominantly commercial, so you might you might have commercial on the, I I was just handed some some renderings lately for a proposal for out there and it had on the on the first row, it had live work units, in other words, little shops on the bottom and then residential on the top and then there was some residential behind it, a variety of different types of residential behind it. But the predominant feature, as you're looking on the road, would need to be commercial, so.
And I understand that, but what you had said about two examples, it was started the other way. It came residential first, then it became commercial after, because you got to have something that's going to feed on the commercial. You can put commercial out there, where are the people going to come from?
Well, these are.
We're having hard enough time here in our own town, so, you know, I like to, you know, I think a lot of it is good, of it is good, I just think the emphasis is backwards as far as residential versus commercial and residential, yes, does bring a lot more money in because each unit costs probably as much as a commercial building and you got more of those. Commercial building ain't going to bill no more taxes in than a residential is. Also, you get with residential, you have a lot more of them, then you have a lot more hookup fees coming in and you have a lot more water and sewer bills every every month as well. Where on the residential or commercial, you only have one.
It's not.
Or possibly two. So it is different ways to look at it. I just think it should be, just my opinion, that the residential ought to be highly looked at and then putting the commercial down in the front and, you know, which is good and having service roads to them and I like the road setups and stuff and all, most of it is all good.
It's not the, it is not the revenue coming in, it is the cost going out for residential, the cost going out. It it costs money to educate children, it costs money to provide services for the residential that we have, that's the way it works.
It doesn't cost us.
And all we get for the commercial coming in is the revenue coming in. So, you know, it we we have a a healthy community is about a seventy thirty split so that we try to keep the costs down for the residential, for the residents, so that we don't have to increase their taxes. Because all of this is to provide for the the residential. So if we're if we are if we're unhealthy, right now, there's, I believe that Mr. Voight's projection was that we have six percent non residential. That's why we're having such trouble with every year with our budget because the taxes aren't high enough, yet we're we just we still have the services that are needed for our our residents. The other thing is that this is a highway corridor. It's a highway corridor that will, it's for auto oriented businesses and so you're going to attract those businesses that rely on the on the auto and the passerby's for these types of businesses. for these types of businesses. If that's, is what you want for that corridor, if you want it to be all residential, then somehow we have to figure out how to provide the services for it. But, but it is a, one opportunity to, to have services, restaurants and, and other things that passerby's might need, gas stations and things like that. So it, it's all in how you want to plan your community, but somehow you've got to get in that commercial. And you have a, you have a one block commercial district here. So it's, it's very difficult.
And if our demographics don't get any better, we're not going to get anything. But.
Same with our water situation.
That's true on that, too. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I was going to say, just maybe to shed a little light to it, you know, you think of downtown Fredericksburg, they have some structures that are, you know, business-oriented so that downstairs, you know, you can walk in, you can walk out restaurant, you know, ice cream shop, whatever it may be. Then they've got other office space up above them and then the next building over, it's residential. So maybe something like that or, or Short Pump even, you know, it's down a main corridor. It's got businesses there and then you go behind the businesses and there's residential. So obviously it wouldn't be four-story or five-story structures like Short Pump, but, you know, you could have two or three, you know, and have that one row of commercial in there. I think that's what that's trying to envision in there.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, am I missing something? I, I'm getting the impression that there is, I mean, we're not, it looks like the design itself is what you're talking about, the facade of what this property would look like. But you're not saying it has to be so much commercial. I mean, are.
You could make the argument that if you put the commercial component along the roadway, which I've always told the applicants is, is a preference, at least.
True.
My suggestion.
Yeah.
That if you do that, then it, it becomes the predominant feature. Even if you have more residential behind it.
Yeah.
And that variety, if you retain along the front and incorporate that by having live work, having residential units above the little shops.
Right.
Then you could.
So you're still, you're still talking about the, if you, if, because I know we're hung up on, because this is to me a broad statement of what mixed use should look like. It, we're not just for the whole town or whatever property here we're talking about. It's not just 301 corridor. Obviously it affects that, but what I'm hearing, what I'm, I, I'm not imagining that it would change if you wanted to build so many houses on a mixed-use property. You, you, we're just asking that you stick to a plan of what the commercial piece should look like. Is, is that correct?
That's correct.
We're not saying you need to make, take out all the residential or, because personally, living in this town for 20 years, there are so many things that I have to drive to Fredericksburg for or Richmond. And, and yes, we are pretty much maxed down on space on Main Street. So it would be great. I mean, that is why I'm a fan of mixed use. Yes, we always need more residential, but I do, I think we just have to, we, we can have all of it.
Be creative. That's right. It's be, about being creative. It's about providing quality development that actually enhances the town.
Yeah.
This hopefully paints a picture. We didn't, we used, if you look out at definitions of mixed use throughout the United States, you'll see very similar to what you're seeing here. And this is taken from the region. So hopefully it paints that picture of a higher quality development.
And in places where I'm seeing that, because land is becoming, as we know in Bowling Green, there's not a lot of land left here. So that's why you're seeing what you're seeing in Fredericksburg and Short Pump. Their, their innovation of bringing it, meeting all the needs of the people in smaller spaces. And really, truly, even though we have a lot of wide-open spaces, Bowling Green itself does not. So I kind of like this, guys.
Okay. Any other discussions? All right, we'll take a roll call. Hooly?
Aye.
Hagerman?
I like the plan. I'm just not sure about if it's going to work out right.
Is that a no?
I don't know if I want to say aye or nay.
You.
All right, well, come on.
You can abstain.
You can go on to the next person and come back to him.
All right, that's what I'll do. Howard?
Aye.
Ms. Coyle?
Aye.
Mr. Voight?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Hagerman?
Nay.
Okay, we got five yeses, one nay. Motion carries. Moving on to the next. Have no delegations. Open for public comments. Do we have anybody that would like to approach the bench and talk to council? Please come up, state your name and address, please. Give you three minutes.
Will y'all hear me? Council, thank you for the opportunity and Mr. Mayor to speak tonight. Bonnie Cannon, South Main Street. And I would like to tell you that I am embarrassed to stand here and tell you this comment I'm getting ready to say. I have been. Born and reared in Caroline County, of which almost up to 30 years, the latter part of my life, I have lived in the town of Bowling Green. And other than Mrs. Davis, which I believe is on the ballot next Tuesday when we all vote, I do not know who is on the town council ballot for the town of Bowling Green, other than Ms. Davis. I don't know how y'all advertise. I don't know how it's getting out on the market. I do not know who was on the ballot Tuesday for this town. And I am very upset about it. I am a residential taxpayer of this town. I should know that. I like to study things like this ahead of time. I don't want to walk to the polls Tuesday and see it there in front of me all of a sudden. And I'm very upset about this. It shouldn't be this way. I think you need to have a better way of getting things out to the residents of the town. All right, that's number one. Number two, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to say something that the two kind of go together, if that makes sense, council. Safety in town, especially on, on Main Street of truck traffic. I'm talking about 18-wheeler logging trucks. I think in Corlans, I'm saying the two things. I think the town needs a noise ordinance. I am so tired of getting woken up at 3:30 in the morning. It's always 3:30 from logging trucks coming right through the middle of the town. They can't be easy. They got to be loud and noisy. I'm so tired of sitting at my driveway sometimes that I cannot even get out of my driveway. I have to sit there this morning and I couldn't, 15 to 20 cars and trucks flying up through there. I mean, I know this goes to safety and I compliment chief, he's not here tonight. I give him full credit. He does a wonderful job, his staff. But I think something needs to be done with this truck traffic that's coming through this town flying. I won't even go out there with my grandson because I'm scared to. I'm scared he's going to get hit. And I shouldn't have to live like this in this town. I'm a taxpayer. And I think that things could be done better. And I would like to see a VDOT study done. I will serve on the committee. I will help y'all. I will give you all input. I'm right there. I listen to it 24/7. And those trucks cannot leave or stop at that light up there without that, what do you call them, guys? Brakes? What do you call those things? I get so tired of listening to that noise. They don't have to do that. Put a signage up. There's a yellow sign up on Route 3 up near Popeyes coming into the city that says residential area, no braking. Y'all know what I'm talking about? Right on the right-hand side, you know, biggest day. Can you do something like that? Something needs to be done about this truck traffic flying through the town. Why are you shaking your head, Mr. Mayor? This has been going on for a lot of years with this truck traffic and we all know that. They don't drive slowly either and they are noisy. Number three, I still do not like the trash situation. Y'all have heard me stand here and say this before. I still drive to the landfill and I still would like to be grandfathered out of the trash pickup because I'm tired of fooling with it. And I do not recycle, so I should at least be getting a credit. And I would like an answer to my first comment, please, from somebody, somehow, before Tuesday. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
May I just, Ms. Cannon? It is, it is available on the State Board of Elections website and I, I can pull it up and read it for you. But if you Google State Board of Elections, yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to say something on that, too. All you have to do is call the register's office here in the county and they'll be able to tell you who's on the ballot as well. And that's just a local phone call.
All right, anybody else?
Dan Webb, 107 Virginia Avenue. Just, I, I thought, had a comment about Harvest Festival. I liked the new layout. Tents pushed out to the side, keeping the middle open. Liked where the van was. I thought things flowed, you know, a lot better than they had in the past, so I thought that was a positive. Just wondering, are we going to get any sort of report as to where we are with the water situation in Stan Tech? Was that part of this evening's meeting? Do we have any? Are we pushing them along? I, you know, I feel as though that's very important.
Thank you, Dan. Anybody else? Hearing none, seeing none. Close, uh, public comment. Open up for member comments.
Okay, I'll go first. Okay.
I just wanted to say thank you, thank you to Jackie Nance for holding down the fort. I know everybody was sick here for several days. I hope the staff is doing well and better. But when I called, Jackie was holding down the fort, so thank you for doing that. Appreciate it.
Yeah, you had some good luck making through that, too. Okay, let me, let's see, I'll start, I'll start with the public comment. Okay, as far as those that are running for election, I, I would actually argue that it's not really the, the town's duty to campaign for any individuals. So that would be one reason why the town's not going out there talking about that. Now, back when it was time for the candidates to put their names in, the open seats were addressed, but that was back in, in, in June. I won't get into all of it, but it is, Ms. Davis's seat, Ms. Gaines' seat, Ms. Howard's seat are up for the general election and then there's a special election for Mr. Hageman's seat. And there are a few people that are running for those positions. I could talk to you later to, to talk about who, but I don't feel that that's particularly appropriate to campaign for any individual people right now. Still feel you on the trash. I get you. We'll have some continued discussions about that in the future as we get some more reports from the corrections that were, were made. I did notice some trucks that were at, at least separate. They weren't dumping it all in the same truck anymore, so we'll have to get some more feedback from all of that. The noise ordinance, I might have to look back into some old stuff. I, I do remember some discussions from way back, couple of years, specifically regarding what we could do to enforce any kind of, you know, noise ban or, or a, a ban on the Jake brakes themselves. That was a while back. I do not remember how the conversation went. Let's see, as far as Stan Tech, we haven't heard back yet. Really anxious to hear back from them and get, get some feedback. The Planning Commission is also chomping at the bit for that information. We all want it as soon as we can get it and, you know, as, as soon as we can have a public meeting after we get it, we're going to make all the information public. So I, I'm with you. I, I want to know what's going on with all of that. And then lastly, I, I just want to kind of concur with, with what Dan said. I, I had a fun time at the Harvest Fest and, you know, mostly only have positive things to say about it and just look forward to the next one. And, you know, any, any more get together to get some more information, like kind of an after-action report on how everything went behind the scenes. That's all I have. Thanks.
I guess that, that, that takes care of everything, Jeff. Thank you very much. Anybody else got anything they want to say?
I, I'm going to concur with you guys. I think the festival went really well. Is, do we have, when can we expect a report? We normally do have that and I just don't ensure with the financials and how.
There'll be a report about the Harvest Festival next month. We are still compiling and paying bills from it. And so in order to have the completest report, Lisa also had a meeting that she needed to go to with the schools tonight. So if she, she may be here for the meeting next month, but we, regardless, we will give a report next month.
Okay. My only, and I, I want to say this because I want people to understand why I'm saying this. My only concern, and I mentioned to you, Alice, Allison, was there was a lot of dog presence and I'm a dog lover. I love animals. But with the amount of people that we have that come, I feel like this, this year I saw more than I've ever seen. And, and I feel like that could be a little bit of something we just need to think about in the future for safety issues. Because, you know, not everybody's dog is, is wonderful and I don't, it, it, it's just the history of little kids that go up to dogs when they shouldn't. There's just safety issues with thousands of people coming through. We need to really think about that in the future.
We, we are compiling everybody's comments to try to make the event better next year. I think it's gotten to the point where we had to turn cars away from the antique car show. The, the police officer that reported to me said he turned, he turned probably 100 cars away. And so my idea for next year is to, and we're going to get started on it a lot earlier, starting in January, but to have four people that will be working on the Harvest Festival, four individuals, one for the children's area, one for the car show, one for the vendors and one for the music. We may add another one depending on the needs, but we'll have a group of people so that there'll be, the, the person in charge will have presence in that area all day long because it was so successful this year that we just need to, and we're trying to add things like we did this year, more events and more, yeah, more, just different things to it. So, thank you.
All right. And Bonnie, the reason I was shaking my head no was because VDOT has, controls the streets and we have asked about a no Jake break sign coming into town and they have told us no, that we don't qualify, we don't have the traffic count and all this and that. And we have had a VDOT study early this year or late last year where they counted all the traffic in town already. So that's done every five years. But, yeah, we have asked about that and I agree with you on the trucks and the Jake brakes, but when VDOT owns our streets, they, they kind of rule us on that. But anyhow, anybody else on member comments?
Yeah, Mark, maybe you know why the trucks are allowed to come through our small town. I mean, we have a bypass for that reason, don't we?
Yes, ma'am, but it's the same thing. I asked VDOT, they said they can't deter them because it's, it's a major thorough, it's a, it's a major road. It's their road. And, yeah, I have asked, could they make, you know, but they said no. So. Anybody else before we move on? All right. Moving on to staff reports. 2022 Christmas parade. I didn't see anything in there. Do we have any news on that or are we moving on?
I have something on that. It was, come to attention the other day, Jackie brought, come over and wanted to know how we were doing on a Christmas suit. I told you last meeting I would take care of it. I did. I talked to Rick. I had Scott over there. He got sized. Rick brought me over gloves and a, and a, and the wigs and all that stuff. And then Jackie come over and said the town bought it. I told Rick and then Rick backed out, he's not going to give us anything, so we got to keep what we got. He was there to help us. We had Scott in there. Scott's been in there twice and got, got sized up for the suit. They wanted to know, why didn't I tell them? Well, why didn't you ask me if, if I had anything too? That's my question. Nobody asked me how, if I moved along with Rick. No, I did not tell you because me and Scott were still working with Rick to get sized. So we're not going to get a free suit from Rick. So I think the town had already bought a Santa Claus suit, so we'll have to keep that.
I think that Santa suit has been returned, so we will, we'll just purchase another one then.
All right. I'm, I'm sorry. I mean, I, I had it all worked out with Rick and I had Scott in there. He was sized. Nobody talked to Scott about it either, so, but I mean, we had it all taken care of.
Moving on to Recovery Act funds, anything to report on that before we move on? Anything to report on that before we move on? All right, planning commission update. Just what we just done or what value, got something else?
Yeah, that's pretty much it. We've just been discussing things moving forward on just items, hopefully to update and correct, things like that.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Public Works, anybody have anything for Josh? I have, I have one thing, Josh. Just a reminder, I guess, uh, please try to get the Christmas decorations up before the, the week of Thanksgiving.
Uh, yes, sir, I, I put it in there. We're going to put them up, um, you know, that, because we worked two and a half days that week, so we'll put them up before Thanksgiving, before we leave.
Thank you, sir. That was just a reminder. I couldn't remember if we, to handle it or not. All right. Police Department, he's not here.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say something on that part of it.
Yes, sir, go ahead, sir.
One of the calls that come in this, this past month was, there was two kids on top of the old furniture store in town, and I called it in, Justin went over there, or he couldn't make it. They sent the Sheriff's Department over there, and they found the two kids on top of there. This is not the first time this has happened. It's a safety issue for the town. I think anybody that has a two-story building or anything like that, and they have a ladder on the side of the building, they're going to have to put some type of a lock on it. I think we need to make that happen. There is no lock on that or no cage around it. These kids just crawled right up the ladder. I think it was two or three years ago, we had the same incident, and they threw bricks on the lights vector in Bill's lot and broke them out, and we, you know, there was, it just, it just happens. But, I mean, there was no reason for these kids to be on the roof, and they were on there, I think about 10 days ago, and they did catch them, and they were taken care of, so. But we need to look at a town policy or something. If there is a, a stairwell that's going up on the outside of the building, there, I mean, all these places in Richmond and all the towns, they, they've got to have them. It's some type of a cage that's built around, it's locked, and that, that's, goes up eight feet, and then you, you got to have a ladder to get there. But these kids just went, they're up on the roof. So we need, I think that needs to be addressed. We need to get ahold of the person that owns that building and have something done about it. Because it's not the first time. This is actually the second time. And who knows how many times they were up there at night and nobody's seen them.
All right, sir. Thank you. Town Treasurer? Anything for Jackie? Jackie, do you have anything you want to add, say?
Have anything new?
Nothing new. All right. Then I guess we move on to the Town Administration Monthly Report. Do you have anything, Allison?
Nope.
Anything for Allison? All right. Moving on to the consent agendas, I have been asked to pull item number 11 off. So we will vote on 10 and 11 separately. I have a motion to accept item 10, the minutes of October 6th, uh, Town Council Meeting.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
I got it first by Mr. Voight. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hagerman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Our motion carries. Item number 11. I know Jeff had something on it he wanted to ask a question about.
Yeah, I think, I think this question's going to be for Josh. Sorry to make you walk back up there again. I just wanted to ask about the, um, the three torque wrenches on here for $223 apiece. And at the same time, I, I do want to mention to, um, because I, I assume, assume Jackie put this thing together, the, um, the math on the invoice number did that calculator thing where it's going in exponential. So I don't know if that might be a record-keeping problem or not. But yeah, can, can you speak to these torque wrenches?
Okay, there you go. So as part of doing like maintenance in-house, we have to buy specific tools. So working on the lift stations, vehicles, things like that, bolts and things like that have to be torqued to a certain foot-pounds. And if they're not, then the equipment's not going to work right. So that's why we have to buy, you know, certain tools. When I arrived, the tools we had were non-existent. Not sure what happened to them, but, so as we've gone along, we've slowly purchased, you know, different tools as we've seen that we've, we've needed them and added them to the inventory list.
Yeah, I, I get that, and obviously you wouldn't go buy a $20 torque wrench. I, I get that part. I, I just, I see three, and, you know, I can't necessarily know everything about the, the small amount of information that's given here. You know, I, like I see where it says E L E C. I didn't know if that meant it was some sort of like fancy electronic torque wrench or not. But at $223, I kind of questioned myself why it's a 3/8 inch drive and not a half-inch drive. That and also why there needed to be three. I didn't know if it's like for, you know, three multiple areas or in the trucks or, you know, we had, we had some discussions about hand tools not too long ago. It's one of the reasons I bring it up. Now, I, obviously I know that you need them. I'm not saying you don't need them. I just wanted to ask about them.
So this specific tool goes down to a lower foot-pounds than a half-inch wood? So like bolts on a, a vehicle, you can't torque it with a half-inch, you know, because they start at, you know, 50 foot-pounds. This one starts at, you know, goes from, you know, five to, so a bolt that needs to be torqued to say, you know, 18 foot-pounds, you know, you won't be able to use that on a, a half-inch because a half-inch only goes to a certain foot-pounds. And so, you know, um, working on, like, say, I'll just use one of the trucks, our trucks, for example. If you're working on, like, you're taking the transmission pan off, you can't overtorque that because you're going to send the bolt through the aluminum, you know, transmission, and then you're going to need a new transmission at that point. So it's specific tools for specific things. I, I mean, we haven't, you know, like I said, when I got here, so we, we didn't have anything, so we bought some over time. And, you know, I've stayed within our budget between those three, you know, as, you know, having gone over that. It's, when we need something specific, we, we end up getting it.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I, I mostly, yeah, I follow you. I just want to make sure it's what I thought it was. You know, I was curious why three, you know, I only have one backup for all my tools, but, so it's vehicular. That's all good.
So I think what this shows is it's split between three different, it's split between Public Works Sewer and Water, because we're using it between those departments. I think that's why it's showing, because we only have one.
Oh, it's one $600, $700 torque wrench. Okay, all right. Didn't pay that much for mine.
So the torque wrench is guaranteed for life.
Well, yes, yes.
Then inventory, so whether I, I'm here working or whether whoever's here working, the next person that's in the inventory, it's, you know, locked away. So if it breaks, you know, 10 years from now, you can return it and you get a brand-new one for free. I mean, anywhere else you would go and get the same torque wrench, it's still going to be in that area.
Snap-on, Mako, all that, yeah, I know.
So.
That's all good, I was just asking. Thanks.
Josh, just stay up there for a second, because I just, so I think this has been a continuous process with many things. So when you go and buy equipment, do you price things out? Or do you just go, which buying local is great, but a steel trimmer for $700 can get cheaper at another location? A steel blower for $500? I'm, I'm just wondering, is there a way to price things out? Or do you just go right to a source and, and get it without pricing things out?
Yeah, both of those were purchased from G and G. We, you know, we try to purchase from, you know, either A and M or G and G, you know, best we can. I know, working with Randy, he will price match, and G and G, you know, will sometimes. So as far as like that equipment, it, it, you know, we're using it year-round. So we end up buying, you know, commercial-grade equipment, which costs a little bit more.
Right.
Some things we shop around for, some things, I mean, we don't just because of what it's used for. If it's something that we use like, you know, once or twice a year, we'll, you know, try and find something cheaper. If it's something we're using all the time, and we only have one of, we try to buy something that's a little bit better quality, that'll last a little bit longer.
Got it. All right, thank you.
One of the issues that a council member talked about for this information that you're reviewing right now is the, is the size of the font. So we'll work on trying to, to enlarge it somehow. It comes, I mean, it's, that's the way it's reported. Maybe it's not these particular reports, but earlier in the financial reports. So we'll blow it up somehow for, for you, so it's easier to read.
I got one more. The miscellaneous security monitoring, is that the panic buttons? Is that like a monthly fee for that or?
Yes, I believe that was.
Okay.
All right, anybody, anything else? I do have a motion to accept item number 11 of the consent agendas.
So moved.
Who was that, Jeff? Mr. Voight, okay. Second by Ms. Howard. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Hearing none. Motion carries 100%. Moving on to item number 12. There is no unfinished business, so we go to new business. UV lights. Current UV light system at W W T P is obsolete. It's not functioning per manufacturer specification, non-per the W W T P operating and maintenance manual. D Q has mentioned this issue in the past inspections of the water treatment plants. Since funding for per P E R was not approved, we are breaking it apart and seeking other sources of funding for each section. Quote is $73,000. All right.
So thank you for reading.
You are.
So, like you said, current UV light obsolete, they have not made this since 2007. For the manufacturer specifications or the manual. And what that means is the controller that controls the lights is, is not working. It's off. So before I arrived, they had an electrician come out and kind of hook up a separate, a separate system to read UV intensity. So what I'm asking for is to just completely redo the system that's not obsolete anymore. The quote is from Trojan, Trojan UV Lights, which is the same system we have now. And the quote is for $73,000. So what that is, it's the brand-new system, and it'll just take the place of the old system. So there's no new construction or anything like that. It'll just take the old system out, put the new system in, and it's, it's brand-new. And the reason why I bring it up again is because it was mentioned, I'm sorry. It was mentioned in a past inspection when a D Q official was here, that it was not functioning properly. And kind of what they're looking for and what they ask when they come in is how long the system's been running, you know, how many operating hours, which lights are on, which lights are off, which the system would do is if the controller was working, but it's not. I've had the Trojan rep come out. Again, it's obsolete. They don't make parts for it anymore. So there's no buying anything. He did say they could, you know, rebuild it, but then he told me it would be the same cost as a new one. So might as well get the whole system. But it was information for y'all. So any questions?
So the old system is dead. This is something that will take, redo the new system. It's new equipment. Is it the same type of equipment only updated?
Yes, ma'am, it's the exact same system, updated, brand-new. Just, you know, whatever, you know, technology they have from before they've updated.
To now.
To now.
So is this the best? Or is there an alternative to using the UVA lights? Is there something more innovative out there that can be used?
As far as like UV systems, I mean, we're going back just with Trojan because that's who's, you know, top of the line. As far as like alternative disinfection, you would have to, you know, get with D Q to, if you want to switch to chemical or do another type. But as far as UV, that's what's.
Well, what would be better? Is chemical better? Is this better? What would be better for our system and more innovative and?
So as far as like what's best is just replacing what's there, because it's the cheapest, it's the easiest. With chemical addition, you would end up using chlorine, and then you would have to use another chemical to dechlorinate it. So it would end up costing more, and then you're back to the construction and engineering and working with.
What's the lifetime on this?
I can ask him that. It's typically 15 to 20 years. But I can ask him, you know, about warranties and things like that as we go along. The old one went out a couple of years ago, so it's been in there close to 30 years.
Does D Q have suggestions on what may be better, too? Or they haven't given any of that information?
They haven't really discussed it. They just, when the inspector comes out, they notice things aren't working, they report it, and then they go from there. I mean, they'll typically end up just recommending, you know, replacing the equipment.
Is there any kind of lifetime warranty or what's on the equipment, on the contract itself, on the maintenance? Is that included in $73,000 or would those be additional costs?
That, that would be additional. $73,000 is just for the equipment.
Equipment itself? Doesn't include labor installation or anything like that?
No, labor wouldn't be that expensive because it's, again, it's just taking the old system out and putting it right back in. There's no cost associated with any additional construction. So we could do some of it, and then I can get a quote from our electrician to help us out, which shouldn't be that much.
So it would cost something additional than $73,000?
A, a little bit more, which we have that money in our repair budget to, to handle. Because that, that cost would be minimal. I, I don't foresee that cost being more than, you know, a few thousand dollars, maybe two, three thousand.
Is it hard to get those costs for us so we can see exactly or as close to what it will be than just $73,000?
Oh, yes, ma'am, I can get that cost for you.
All right, cool. Thanks.
I'd like to add one thing on. Well, I understand this is one proposal. Is there another manufacturer that may be suitable for the replacement of this system? That, you know, another brand that it may be 65 or it may be 82,000? I mean, I, I don't know. But with a quote this high, I would expect to have at least three quotes of similar specifications to then gauge off of.
I mean, I can ask the other manufacturers. I mean, they're all going to be pretty similar. I went with Trojan because, again, it's going to be the easiest to take the same system out, put the same system back in versus going with a different system that may require, you know, different construction and, you know, increase the cost. You know, whereas equipment might be, you know, less expensive, the construction costs are going to, you know, outweigh that. But I'll, I'll get some of the quotes as well.
Could you, uh, could you also get with Allison and see where the $73,000 would come from?
I, I would request it from the ARPA funds, because, again, in our budget, there, there's just not any money there. And since not approving the engineer report with the USDA funding, we're kind of at a standstill of where to, you know, find funding. I've had preliminary discussions with D Q, and it sounds like it's just going to be a loan. There's no, like, not as far as like, there's no grant money. It would, it sounded like it would just be a loan instead of like that grant loan that it usually is.
Is there any other items that are in that report that you got from the, from the engineer study that we need to be concerned about replacing also? Critical? Or is this a critical one?
I mean, this is critical. I mean, it's one of the easier ones to do. There are other things that need to be addressed. Again, I'll bring up the sewer lines throughout town. I mean, they are falling apart, and we're going to replace water lines here soon. That's going to disturb the ground, so I'm.
Yeah, but, but in the plant, everything other than this, we can deal with for a while?
I, I wouldn't say for a while. I mean, this'll fix, you know, one issue. I would say we still need to kind of look forward to the future of, you know, updating and make sure everything is, you know, staying on track. You know, as far as like the equipment being the age that it is. But this'll replace, you know, the thing that D Q has mentioned. The next thing would be the filters as far as like repairing those, you know, making sure they're, they're up to those standards as well. But for now, it'll, is the only thing.
So Mr. Mayor had a, a good point, I think. So is there a way that we can get info? I'm sure there is a way you can do it. get info, I'm sure there is a way you can do it, it's just your time, to determine a timeline of when things may, like say, you said things are going to happen. This is one of the easy things. So are you gonna say in two years, we may need this? In another year, this may be possible. So we have an idea of a timeline of when things may break down or may be a possibility of repair so we can see or have a vision of monies we may need to appropriate or just give us an idea instead of here we need $73,000, last month we needed this, you know what I'm saying? Just kind of give us a heads up. Oh, guess what? In another year, this may be going into the hole. You know what I'm getting at there?
Yeah, so that's, that's what the engineering report was. So the whole plant is pretty much at its useful life. So as far as being replaced or going out, I'm not sure exactly when it's gonna go out because it's already at the end of its useful life. So it's pretty much, it could go out tomorrow or it could last another 10 years. And it's the same with the, you know, the concrete sewer lines. They're falling apart. So I don't know if it'll collapse tonight or in a month. That's, that's why we did the search grant and then hired, you know, the engineering firm to do the preliminary engineering report that has, you know, lists all the information of, you know, useful life, what age it is, how much it'll cost and things like that.
So Josh here said they, it's not working at all. Is that correct?
It's working, the controller itself that has like, you know, which lights are on or off. And things like that's not working. They have hooked up separate readers for each UV bank that reads intensity. But it's not per manufacturer specs and it's not per the operation and maintenance manual.
It's kind of jerry red right now to keep going.
Yeah.
Got you. Okay, thanks.
That UV thing has been mentioned ever since the first time I toured that facility, like five, six years ago.
Yes, again, because of the age of it. And it finally, you know, the controller went out. It's, when DEQ comes around to do an inspection, if something's not working properly, they're gonna note it and they want you to fix it. And they want it running per, you know, obviously the manufacturer specs and per your operation and maintenance manual, which is what the manufacturer specs are.
Oh, absolutely. I'm for getting the thing fixed. I'm just mentioning like it's been on people's minds for quite a long time. Been expecting needing it part of this. It was part of the PER and everything. Yeah, I've been there. I've seen it. Well, okay, you want to make sure you don't actually see it because you don't want to look at that thing. But I will burn your eyes out if you look at it. Well, if it's working.
Yeah, the lights, the lights are working and it's disinfecting. It's just that the intensity reader is not on the controller that it should be on is what it, like the main controller that's telling you how many hours each bulb's been in there, telling you, you know, what percent each light is at and things like that. That's what's not working. So it has a, it has an intensity reading, but it's not the correct one.
Okay, so it is at least still disinfecting right now?
Yes, we're still meeting our permit requirements, yes.
Well, that's good.
All right, so what is council's pleasure on this? Want to, you get more information or you want to call for a vote tonight to give it? What?
I'd like to see some more info.
Anybody else the same? Look at it for next month, just some more info?
Josh, timeline of, like, so more of it failed in the last month? Like, has there been like a deep curve that it's gotten worse?
Not that it's gotten, it hasn't gotten any worse. The only, like, one of the reasons I bring it up and the reason why I put the other page, it's, it'll be the second page after the introduction page, is part of the application for our renewal process where it mentions, you know, just inflow and infiltration and it mentions are any improvements to the facility scheduled? That's part of the reason why I brought it up because I would like to put, you know, something in there, you know, that we're working towards.
Of course.
And again, and I also have to let DEQ know that we are not moving forward with the engineering report. So part of that renewal process, kind of like with the groundwater, how we have to abandon wells that they put, you know, in the permit, like by a specific day, you have to do, you know, X, Y, Z. It's the same with our wastewater permit is if they see something or they notice something, they can put in there. By this day, you have to accomplish, you know, X, Y, Z or have a plan. So it was kind of being proactive, you know, to, you know, show DEQ that, hey, we're working on things and, you know, we're gonna move forward, you know, one step at a time. So it's not put in, you know, a permit, you know, for a requirement or they don't come in and give you a consent order or anything like that. It's, you're showing them, you know, we're being proactive, we're, you know, we're working on things as best we can.
Yeah, no, that, that's good. If I, if I could just, I guess, make a request of you on behalf of the others here. I'll bite this bullet. Yes, something that we're sometimes looking for. You may notice we're, we do try to stay pretty engaged, you know, more than we have been in the past. You know, we're not trying to micromanage anything. We're just trying to kind of know and also ask the questions to make sure the public knows and everything too. We're just trying to get all the information out there and be complete and transparent, yeah, transparent as well, but also just complete. So that's why we'll, we'll ask things like, hey, did you get more than one quote? You know, at the end of the day, we would probably go with the one that you're suggesting because, like you said, it's the provider that we already have. But we want to do our due diligence and we want to have the other options. And so we do look to our staff to find those. So I can't make those phone calls. So we do, you know, try to, you know, instigate for the staff to get multiple, if they can, you know, from other providers to see what the cost. Or that would help also because it would show council and the public, hey, this is an industry standard for what this costs. Like, you may be thinking to yourself and you're, again, you'd be right because you're the pro there. It's gonna be the same cost for everybody. I'll just show them the one. But it would be informative to everybody that we see that. And then you're just, you know, affirming everything that you're thinking when you do that. So that, that's why we often request, you know, extra, you know, the RFP process basically. But in addition to that, when, when you're, you're asking these things, like I know, well, I know in a layman's term what this thing is. But if there is some sort of, you know, high level explanation you can give on what a device is, when it's costing $73,000, that could also be, be useful. It's kind of already been implied. It's, you know, it's one of the ending stages of the thing. It's a disinfecter to make sure that you don't have a bunch of bacteria alive in your water as it goes back into the system. But, you know, that could be helpful. You know, also $73,000, you might think this thing's really big. It's really not a lot. How big is this thing exactly?
I mean, size wise?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, the area at the plant, I mean, it's 15 by, I would say eight maybe.
Yeah, I was thinking like it's just a couple of these tables long. I remember standing on the grill on top of it. Okay, that was, that was it. Thanks.
Josh, you think you can have something for next month or the, or at the first of the year?
I'll call around and see if we can get some people out here. I mean, currently, it's, it's been difficult getting, not just for wastewater, but anybody to come out and.
Well, whenever, whenever you can get it, let Allison know and we'll put it on the agenda either for next month or back, or in January to bring it back up, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, moving on. Item number 13, just informational items. November 11th is Veterans Day Ceremony, which will be out here in front of the courthouse. They said they will have the lawn back together for that. And also the town is sponsoring of it as well. We paid for the programs again this year. Item number 14, Department of Motor Vehicles Animal Friendly License Plate Program. Didn't know anything about it, but it was nice. We got 30 bucks out of it. You know, we had two, two animal lovers in town that, that signed up for it. So, I mean, that's pretty good. And then also the last thing is Town Community Campus Development Survey. I think ladies Valerie, I think it was one of the big play and I think number two and trying to get this going. So we've got a survey to go out. How's it, tell us a little bit about it. How's it going out to get to public? What's the?
So we basically created this simply because we had a lot of people asking about what was happening with park playground, et cetera. And when we thought of the expansion, including the town hall, making it a campus area, it was never our intention to not utilize information that's already been presented. This was just a means of expanding on that. We know Mr. Webb has done a lot of time, so we have all that information or whatever we have. So we just wanted to send out the survey, hopefully with the utility bills, as well as put the survey online so that those people who have been asking and are interested about it can take the survey in town and give us thoughts and ideas on proceeding with this. Because a lot of people have asked about it and we just want to make sure they're aware and we're transparent to what's going on. And that's basically why we put this together, to show you all.
All right. I think it looks pretty good, pretty detailed. But you say it's gonna be in town also or it's just gonna be online?
No, it's, it'll be put in all of the utility bills with the water bills and it'll be online. And then it says that on there so they can access it through paper if they don't have a computer or they can send it online once it's put on the website.
Very good. Thank you. Now we're down to the last item. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Can I make that one too?
No.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Davis? Yes, ma'am. What is that real quick?
They are being prepared. Jackie, estimate date for bills going out? Next week, at the beginning of the week or?
Next week is the. Yeah, we do know that we need to fix that situation. We're gonna get these bills out first and then we'll start working on that issue.
All right, I got a motion by Mr. Vogt to adjourn. I got a second by Randy.
No, I made the motion. Seconded.
You got it.
All in favor say aye. Adjourned.